I went through there.
All right, we've got five o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order today, Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. Rule call, we have Selectman Howdy Goodwin, Eric Eaton, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlow, Town Manager Jesse Dunbar, and Town Clerk Sarah Abbott. McKenzie has called in, said she won't make it tonight.
Make a motion to excuse McKenzie Jewett from tonight's meeting?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to excuse McKenzie Jewett from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Adoption of agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to change?
You want to add the executive session to the end?
Yes, of the land, yep.
I make a motion to add executive session, land acquisition, to the end of the meeting?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to add executive session titled Land Acquisition at the end of tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, approval of minutes. We have the minutes from April seventh.
I motion approve the minutes from April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Howdy was on vacation.
Wish that was still.
Yeah, no, tell me about it. Approval of warrants. We have warrant one oh four for one hundred eighty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents, one oh five for twenty thousand two hundred nine dollars and twenty-three cents, one oh six for twenty-five thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents, one oh seven for sixteen thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents, one oh eight for fifteen thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-two cents, one oh nine for sixty-four thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars and forty-nine cents, and warrant one ten for five thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents.
I make a motion to approve warrants one oh four through one ten.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants one oh four through one ten. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next we have financial reports. You, Jesse?
All right, so these reports are as of March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, which is seventy-five percent of the way through the fiscal year. A couple highlights I'll point out from your memo. In March, we collected twenty-seven thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars in property taxes, bringing total collections to ninety-four point one-one percent of budget. We also collected thirty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars in motor vehicle excise tax, resulting in total collections at eighty-two point six-nine percent of budget. We received eight hundred and sixty-one dollars in registration agent fees, two hundred and eighty-seven equip fees, three hundred and ninety-seven in plumbing permit fees, eighteen hundred and thirty-five in building permit fees, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-three in cable franchise fees, and fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty-five in checking interest. Down on the expense side, a couple highlights. The administration cost center is at eighty-four percent of budget. In March, we had additional expenses of twelve hundred and fifty-two in office supplies, five hundred and two in postage, twelve hundred and ninety-three for the audit, forty, three hundred and ninety-eight in attorney's fees, nine hundred and twenty in computer replacement, three hundred and sixty in heating oil, six hundred and twenty-four for firearm, and four hundred and twenty-eight in repairs. In the public works cost center, we're at seventy-four point nine percent of budget. In March, the notable costs included eight hundred and eighty-one for heating oil, ten thousand five hundred and seven for file and sander parts, one thousand thirty-one for diesel, five thousand eighty-seven for roam salt, nine hundred and forty-five in outside repairs, and seven hundred and ninety in supplies. Jumping down to the general ledger, we received five thousand four hundred and seventy in revenue sharing from the state in March, bringing total receipts for FY twenty-five to one hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-three, or seventy-four percent of what was budgeted for the year. In the town truck reserves, you'll see the decrease of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and three for the purchase and installation of the body on the new fifty-five hundred, and you'll see a decrease of eight hundred and seventy-two in the backside glass reserve from purchase of tables and tents for this year's event. Otherwise, they were noticing that there were changes in general reserve accounts in March.
Okay, thank you, Jesse.
I move to accept the July twenty-twenty-four through March twenty-twenty-five financial reports.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept the July twenty-twenty-four through March twenty-twenty-five financial reports. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, now we're on to regular business. The first thing we have is a consent agreement. Would you like to summarize, Jesse, or would you rather have Angie summarize what we have in front of us here?
I'd have Angie summarize.
Okay.
As I explained in my memo, I've been working with this property owner to find a solution. There are setback violation once it was discovered, and we agreed that the consent agreement, administrative consent agreement is probably the most logical solution for this violation since it's a portion of our house that's in the setback. Should you consider agreeing to this consent agreement? I did provide you with a draft for your review, and you can amend it in any way that you think will be appropriate. There are provisions in the state statute that allow you to assess a monetary penalty for each day the violation occurred, and you can also use that to recover fees or administrative costs associated with administering this consent agreement. I left those sections blank for you to figure out what you think is the appropriate penalty, if any. I did offer for your consideration that there are no life safety concerns related to this violation. There will be no shoreline zoning violations. The original property owner properly obtained all the necessary permits back in the nineteen eighties when he built this house, and it doesn't appear that he acted in that way. Additionally, the new owner has acted quickly and cooperatively to resolve this violation. And last, I agreed to provisions in the consent agreement to specify that this is not going to be a legal non-conforming structure, so any future additions or replacement structures will have to comply with all the provisions which govern this. Happy to answer any questions you have about the specific consent agreement. I do think the owner has a representative here today to, if you have any questions, for her.
I've got just a couple quick ones, Angie.
Yep.
Why are you considering it non-conforming? I mean, I understand it's, you know, it's been approved, but, I mean, isn't it still going to be non-conforming?
Well, it will be, it will actually still be, non-conforming is that it was there before the ordinance went into effect.
Oh, okay.
The ordinance provision changed after, and then it was non-conforming. This will be non-compliant, but this will, you'll have your blessing till the management does this.
Yeah, I'm just curious about the wording. And does the abutting neighbor, are they aware of it? So it's not going to be something that shows up later?
I didn't notify the abutting property owner. I don't know, have you spoken to them?
I mean, if it was done before zoning, I guess it's really.
It's been there for thirty years.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know, sometimes when things get flagged.
It was done at a time when there wasn't a survey, and the description of the property was very difficult, so this discovery happened.
I know, this is a dead on comment.
Yep, at least it wasn't three feet over the line. At least it was on your offer. Yeah, and one of those two little boxes up here on the, on the map, it looks like the neighbors' dwellings are pretty close to, whatever they are. They look like they're on.
Pretty close, yeah.
Yep.
Not that uncommon.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't see any penalties.
I don't see any issue with it. Stuff happens like that over the years, and it can be one survey say one thing and one say something else, especially way, way back then, so.
Do you have, like, time costs told?
I mean, I probably spent eight hours between researching this, writing the notice of violation, mailing back and forth with the parties, and then preparing the consent agreement, but that would be the only administrative cost.
Attorney's fees?
Eight hours is part of the normal duties of your job, kind of, though?
Yeah, but this is something that you're sort of giving them.
Right, in addition.
As an exception, it wouldn't be mine.
You're willing to cover Angie's time?
I'm sure they are, because they would just love to have this resolved. It's in an estate now, and the person representative in the widow would simply like to deal with something.
Yeah, I understand.
That's what I'm thinking.
Is that an insult to Angie?
Yeah, no, 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 it's not. I just mean anything to cover the payment. We're not looking for anything.
No, I agree.
I don't even care about anything.
I wouldn't think.
Be done with it, okay?
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
And now, what is the next process? Will that form be filled out and presented to the press corps? Or how will that information get to them?
Yes, and actually Jesse and I kind of talked about it. Your signatures are on the last page, and if you want to take out, like, the penalty section, I can go back, amend that, take it out of there, and we'll just use the page that you signed. And then, once you all sign it, we'll present it to him.
And he needs to know the, he needs to sign.
He needs to register. Oh, record it, register.
He's going to have to do, he's in court for you right now, so I'm going to have to email it, and have him go get it signed out there, and then exit back.
Well, thanks for working on that, Angie, and thanks for resolving it easily.
Yeah, I know, I know my sellers really appreciate it.
I make a motion to approve and sign the consent agreement between the town of Tremont and Paul?
Briscoe.
Briscoe? Okay, with no penalties.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve and sign the consent agreement between the town of Tremont and Paul Briscoe with no penalties, no penalty fee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next, the regular business. We have the two thousand and twenty-five annual town meeting warrant.
So this is just a minor administrative change. The top of the warrant is always addressed to a resident of the town of Tremont, known as Town employee, so it's easy for the clerk to have that post from the time coming. The previous warrant you signed, that employee that's listed is no longer employed here. So I consulted with M and A about the proper process to change the name. An advisory would be best just as you make the motion again, sign it with a new name at the top. And just in case anybody's wondering, Kevin pointed out before, the warrant in the town report has the original name, but the annual report is not required to contain the warrant, so there's no concern that it's in the annual report. No other change to the warrant.
I make a motion to approve and sign the warrant for the two thousand and twenty-five annual town meeting.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve and sign the warrant for the two thousand and twenty-five annual town meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we're on to the ferry terminal float update. I'm surprised we don't have Tyler here. Is this more about Jesse?
Yeah, that's just a update for me. So, the, as you may recall, the ferry terminal floats, we applied for a grant, I think, in fall of twenty-three through the main M O T. A matching grant for sixty thousand dollars, which our share would be thirty. Harbor committee at the time discussed it and recommended asking Swans and Frenchboro to provide ten thousand a piece to make it even with everybody, since they're the majority user of the floats. The select board at the time requested that, but also gave them the option to increase their yearly fee to three thousand dollars. That's the option. Swans picked, Frenchboro didn't really respond. Since then, neither have paid the increase in fee of three, they continue to pay two. We, I briefly mentioned it during, I think, a manager's report, that Tyler and I were talking about going back to them due to the increased costs of the harbor with the storms and everything. The project would be significantly delayed if we have to come up with thirty ourselves. And the D M T is looking to get moving on the project for their end of things. So Tyler and I talked about it, and had some conversations with Swans Island's select chair and the administrator for Frenchboro, and they put it on their upcoming agendas two, three weeks ago, and both towns voted to take the pen down from the lower. So I'll be back before you with their bid specifications and things on the projects. And before that, I have a kickoff meeting coming in like two weeks to indicate to the next steps.
Awesome, that's good. Good work, Tyler, I guess, or Jesse. All right, next, we have the community building policy. What?
I just need to check.
Okay.
Yeah, so the community building policy, the biggest change to that is we no longer issue I D cards. We haven't for some time, since we put the key back here at the town office. The I D cards were used when they were accessing the key at the store. We also don't have the I D machine anymore. So that's the biggest change. The other change is we've had some issues with the keys not being returned in a timely manner when they've been taken out, so we've added a provision that they must be returned within three days, or future use of the facility may be restricted. And the section in green was just, I think it shows up here, was just rearranging the order of that section. It made more sense to rearrange it. And then we changed the section where it talks about if the town office is unsure of a reservation, we can tentatively accept it pending approval of the chair of the select board. Previously said in that event, the chair would notify the applicant, and we just changed it to the staff, so that the chair could actually call the person somebody at the town office to notify them of the chair's decision. Basically, that's it.
We talked about before possibly putting in a D code on it. Are you still looking into that? I think that would be a great idea.
Yeah, I just need to get, I found some options, and I just need to get Bob to let me know which one would be the easiest on the door that's there to switch out. But yes, we'd like to move to a, that generates a one-time-use code.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea.
With the keys we have, particularly over weekends or vacations, if, you know, somebody wants it Friday night and Sunday, then nobody can have it Saturday night, because we don't have, we give it about a percent. So it'd be nice with the code.
Yeah, make sure they know it's a one-time go, and they unlock it. I got a note, but I think that's where we do these one-time codes still.
And you could probably, you could do it right from your phone if you had to. That would be, that'd be slick. Yeah, the other stuff looks good, though.
Yeah.
I motion to adopt and sign the April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five version of the community building policy as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt and sign the April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five version of the community building policy as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Next is the town office flooring, which has anybody seen Jesse's fancy new office? He's got new flooring, new desk, new paint, everything.
So, as you recall, a little over a year ago, we went out to bid for new flooring in the upstairs. It's significantly worse behind the counter where the staff is and in the clerk's office and my office. At that time, if you recall, the bid to remove the tiles there and put down the new flooring was around forty thousand dollars, so we did not proceed with that. A month or so ago, we went ahead of it and replaced the flooring in the clerk's office and got flooring for my office, because they were extremely bad. The clerks were tripping over the tiles in the clerk's office where they were breaking and popping up. So we went ahead and got some flooring at Home Depot, a local contractor, put it down. It was very reasonable. So those two offices were done. We'd like the rest of the building needs to be done, but we'd also like it to match those offices, so it probably won't happen physically until fall, but I'd like to get the flooring, so it doesn't get discontinued, so that it matches throughout the building. So it is just above my spending authority of five thousand dollars to finish the rest of, or buy the rest of the flooring, so I placed it on the agenda for your consideration to use the town office reserve to complete that.
Yeah, that stuff looks pretty good. That vinyl, it's new to me. I haven't put any of that vinyl down, but the vinyl plank, it seems pretty rugged stuff. Looks good.
Also does a shrink.
Yeah, it does, yeah. It's completely waterproof. Yeah, and you know they will. They'll discontinue. As soon as Home Depot stops carrying that, then you're never going to be able to find a box of it anywhere, so you might as well buy it all now, and, but make sure you buy extra. Buy ten percent of what you should, yeah.
Ten percent.
Yeah. You need a couple extra boxes, because otherwise you get a bad spot in your.
We finished these, we finished these two offices, and we had one board left.
Yeah, I heard that. Yeah, that's why I'm saying, make sure this time.
Yes, I did include extras.
Okay.
I motion to purchase flooring for the town office at a cost of up to six thousand dollars, utilizing the town office reserve to fund the purchase.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to purchase flooring for the town office at a cost of up to six thousand dollars, utilizing a town office reserve to fund the purchase. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have town manager's report.
Over the last couple weeks, I dealt with the L D fourteen thirty-eight, the deer hunting discussion. We had talked about putting that on tonight's agenda, trying to discuss if the board wanted to submit, you know, a testimony or a letter about the bill to the public hearing. The public hearing got scheduled very quickly. I reached out to you all about submitting a letter to the hearing, just stating that we didn't have an opinion one way or the other, but if they could delay the public hearing. They went ahead with it, so I just modified the letter to reflect that the public hearing was active, but I didn't change anything else. They had the public hearing. It's still in committee with inland fisheries and wildlife, and they're supposed to schedule a work session for it later this month. They haven't updated the webpage with any information on when that will be. I did watch the public hearing, and the director from inland fisheries and wildlife was reiterating that the law is very clear in the way it is, that the commissioner can open it, but only with any of the affected towns' legislative bodies voting to allow that to take place, so that would be by town meeting vote. So, I mean, it sounds like regardless of the decision on L D fourteen thirty, that doesn't change, still needing the towns each to allow it. But talking with Jamie on Friday, I didn't know if you wanted me to see if I could get somebody from inland fisheries and wildlife to come or zoom in to your make-thin meeting, to go over anything or answer questions you have about the process or anything.
I think that we should, because we've been over, you know, Howdy and Kevin would remember, we've probably been over this twice, at least twice, and we tried to, I mean, we all know that there is a problem, and that there's, the lyme disease is just unbelievable, the deer being hit all the time, and it's, there's a ton of overpopulation, but I definitely don't think opening, opening up to everyone hunting is a good idea at all. I think the last time we'd come up with a bunch of ideas, it was, what, residents only with certain things, and I believe the state said no to every idea that we had. They were like, it had to be open to everybody, it had to be, like, we thought of a hundred different ideas. There were so many ideas, so many different ways, and it just never, never panned out. I think the only way that they were going to work with us is if we got a group of people that were considered hired to thin out the population, I think, was the only way that, that we came, and that, that took a long time, but it'd be nice to see if someone, some fresh ideas from the state would.
Well, the other thing, too, I, my understanding is getting a nuisance permit for deer is pretty easy.
It's not. That's the thing.
Someone told me it was, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, someone just lives by me, tried getting one, and they said they took quite a bit to go through, and they, that's another thing. If they could make that process easier, or, I don't know, just ideas.
Yeah, so I can put it on your next agenda and see if I can get somebody to come, if I'm fine with you. I had a brick, FEMA brick FY twenty-three kickoff meeting, which was the FEMA grant funding we received for the war, Stephen Work Road, Park Point Road, April. It was a very somber meeting from the state's representative, since everything's been canceled and frozen. She was still convinced that ours, our money is there and is secure. I'm not going to spend it, or even, until I am sure of that. And I'll put it on an upcoming agenda, because those grants were for project scoping of those projects with the intent to apply. of those projects with the intent to apply for another brick grant for the project itself. So we need to have a discussion of if we're not able to apply for a seventy-five percent grant on the new wharf, then does it make sense to spend as much designing that work? It's going to be a big delay in actually doing the project. I attended the first EMS planning committee meeting of Tremont Southeast Tower. I had a FEMA conference call with the public assistance side of FEMA that handled all the storm damage. FEMA has completed the there end of that, and it is all been passed on to the state of Maine. And right now, the state of Maine and FEMA are kind of bickering back and forth in each other which one is public in the way in actually providing the funds, so, and China, but they're with the state supposedly. I had a meeting with the Musson Group on a project they're working on that'll be presented to you in the near future regarding land use and mapping and housing. I worked on meeting prep, and I had a meeting and site visits with the main department of parks and rec through the Department of the Interior to check on the grant for the playground and the silco picnic area from eighty-three and eighty-four. They appear to be in compliance. She's going to do her report. Good news out of the visits was that the school can apply again to the same grant for the fencing that they need, and we can apply again for some of the work we need to do in silver. And I had a Zoom meeting with the M B I Historical Society on a project they're doing regarding city management. Office staff, clerk ordered and picked up the annual reports, prepared absentee ballots, worked on town meeting prep, B M V training and B M V reports. Public works, made some repairs to the sweeper, cleaned the sidewalks off, did some repairs out on Cape Road, tree removal on Cape Road. Took the sander and plow off truck four from the plow off of truck one, reset some stones up here at the town office from this winter. Farmer Master worked on float repairs, launched the ferry terminal floats, restacked and cleaned up the parking lot where the floats were stored. Worked on the water main, needed to be repaired down at the wharf. Fixed water pipes in the wharf garage and under the wharf, more float work, and had the mooring chain on ferry terminal floats serviced. And over the next few weeks, I'll be working on prepping for town meeting.
Thank you, Jesse.
When we're talking about the roads and the storm damage, does Lobus Point Road follow in there anywhere?
So Lobus Point, I actually have at six thirty tonight, where we had submitted that to the University of Maine's forum for their engineer seniors, pick thick as a project. They have to present their project on Zoom tonight at six thirty with their proposed plans to how to fix Lobus Point. So we haven't done any brand work or anything yet.
I was just curious, you know, that one is one that's a problem.
So I've seen the, I've seen their presentation. There's a culvert, a box culvert solution and a bridge solution. They recommend a box culvert, different cost and other factors, but we'll be able to... We'll have some stuff to work with after that, that we can give the engineering.
Sounds good. Guess next is suggestions for the next meeting. Date of the next meeting.
I make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty-five, at five o'clock in the town office.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty-five, five P M at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, lastly, we have an executive session titled Land Acquisition.
I make a motion to go into executive session as permitted by one M R S A four oh five dot six dot C for consideration of the acquisition or disposal of real property or rights therein, since premature disclosure of this information would prejudice the competitive or bargaining position of the town.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session titled Land Acquisition, as read by Kevin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? See ya. All right, we are out of executive session at six fourteen. Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor?